Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Jackson County Board of Supervisors. And our meeting today is on Wednesday, November thirteenth of two thousand and twenty-four. It is a later start, and we had a holiday on Monday, as you all well know. And again, we want to thank all of our veterans for their service. We're going to call it Veterans Week now, this is Veterans Day anyway, so we appreciate their service and thank them for that. With me today, I have Don Trancker, and then Plego, myself, Mike Steinis, are your county supervisor. Lisa is our county auditor. Luanne is our executive assistant back here, and Bjorn just walked out, he's IT. Brittany is here from the press. And first on our agenda is Lisa Wetzel from NEI three A, Director of Grants and Development.
Good morning.
Good morning. Is that enough tail, or you want a little more?
No, that's plenty.
That's plenty?
I'll just go by Lisa, at least, at least the two. Well, I believe you guys got the slides that I sent, so I'm not going to pull it up on PowerPoint, if that's okay. So I just wanted to stop back today. I had reached out to find out about dispersment of funding after the funding request that I had sent in through the budget, and understand that it sounded like there had possibly been some allocated, but then it was decided not to be released, potentially due to some confusion about some issues going on at the Senior Center. And so I wanted to come back and talk to you guys a little bit about our agency and what we do, in hopes of really elaborating on the fact that we are so much more than just the particular center. And I know that it's hard for communities to kind of wrap their heads around all of the services we do, because so many of them are actually in the home of older individuals, because that's really where we're trying to keep folks, if that's where they want to be. So just a quick little background, we're actually one of six agencies in the state. There's six hundred and twenty-six area agencies on aging throughout the country. We are actually, oh, I don't know the right word, appointed through the Older Americans Act to provide very specific services. And so we have very strict criteria of specific services that we have to serve that are registered services. And then there are also some services we have that are called like non-registered services that are not mandated, but we do offer because we find that they do have benefits in the community. But we do have those federal guidelines that we have to meet and things we have to offer. Our mission is included there on page two, and our vision, helping older persons respond to their evolving needs and choices. Really, we, in the past, had said that that was to keep people living in their homes as long as they wanted to, but we recognize that some people, there's a lot of nice options out there now. I don't know about where you are, we have a facility where I live back in Cedar Falls. It's amazing. And you know, some folks, they choose to want to go somewhere where they don't have to maintain artwork and things, and that's great. We will help anyone and answer those questions. But a good majority of folks do, they want to stay in their homes. And we like to provide information and assistance to help those folks do whatever their choice is. Who do we serve? Anyone over the age of sixty, their caregivers, and really anybody looking for long-term kind of planning and services. What makes us unique is we're nonprofit, and like I've talked about, it's all based through that federal state funding. We have three main goals in every service we provide, and that kind of makes the umbrella of the services that we offer. And those main goals are keeping people safe, ensuring that people are informed, and connecting them to those services that need to continue to live in the community or the setting of their choice. And then within that, on that page three, you can see kind of our four primary pillars of services. Those are connecting to services remain independent, promoted active aging with health-based programs, providing caregiver support, and enhancing health with nutrition services. The next page there breaks down what the services are that we offer in Jackson County under those four pillars. And I think this is where sometimes people don't always see all of those things and think that we're primarily just a senior center. That is actually a very tiny part of what we do. As you can see, the largest chunk of our services are going to be in those connecting to remain independent. So information and assistance and options counseling, pretty much what it sounds like. Folks give us a call through a toll-free number and ask us a variety of questions. It can be anything as simple as, are there organizations in town that can help me shovel my drive in the winter? Where can I go to get help applying for, you know, Medicaid services? How does Medicare work? We take those calls all day, every day, and have trained staff there to answer them. Options counseling, we actually have folks who go into the home of the consumers, sit down and do detailed assessments with them, where they ask them a variety of questions on an intake, and then can help talk to them about services in the community, different government-funded programs that may be beneficial to helping them stay independent and get the services that they need. And then you can see some of those other things mentioned on there, like homemaker and personal care. Those are just a couple of the options that if someone is in need and does not have either the funding to purchase those services on their own, family to help support them in those purchases, if they need certain kind of guidelines and a level of care, we do have some small funding available to provide some of those services in the home to help them live there, if it's going to help them be safe. And then I'll let you go ahead, and you can see the remainder of those things, but evidence-based classes are going to be the things like Tai Chi for arthritis, healthy steps for older adults, caregiving services, and then the enhancing health and nutrition services are the ones that most are familiar with, our congregate meals, home-delivered meals, and nutrition education. Now, the next pages are going to be some charts and some numbers, because this is where I feel it's going to be, I think, pretty, pretty eye-opening. So, interesting fact, Jackson County's population for aging, the population, the share of the population that's sixty-five and older, has actually increased from eighteen point six percent in two thousand and ten to twenty-two point one percent in two thousand and twenty-two. You guys are a very rapidly aging population in Iowa. And the numbers are kind of showing that, too, for the services we're providing. So on the first graph for Consumer Serve Per Program, while again, I know some of the concern is about that senior center and those congregate meals, if you take a look at the graph there, you can actually see congregate nutrition. We only had made up fourteen percent of the consumers that we served in this area. It's actually a very small part of the consumers that you see, about a hundred and fourteen people. The largest portion of what we're doing in this area is actually going to be in other services that we offer. So that's going to be in that health promotion and nutrition education. So getting people up and moving, teaching them about healthy eating, home-delivered meals, case management, transportation. We're offering a gamut of services here above and beyond just that particular center. As far as units go, while we may have, like I said, those one hundred and fourteen people attending the center, if you base it and look at the units on the next page, the units tell a different story. So a unit of service can be either a meal counts as a unit in the nutrition program, or an hour typically counts as a unit in other programs like case management, homemaker, things of that nature. So the largest number of units here are actually in the home-delivered meals. Sixty percent of the units we offer in this community are going to meals in the homes. You can see there's about sixteen thousand five hundred and forty meals that we have served in the community here.
And what kind of timeframe?
This was in fiscal year twenty-four, so that would be July first of two thousand and twenty-three to June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-four. If you look at the next program, this is where I talk about the financial investment that we put behind those units of service. Home-delivered meals, and part of that application that I put in, I just put in, or meals, because that way it encompasses our home-delivered meal program and congregate meal program. Makes it a little easier on our end, because we tend to have those together budget-wise, but we can also separate it out. But really, the bulk of our spending there, sixty-six percent of our budget in this county, is feeding those individuals at home. It's the home-delivered meals, two hundred and fifty-nine thousand four hundred and twelve dollars. Again, if you compare that to those congregate nutrition, and I have to get my reading goggles out here, it's a pretty tiny piece of the puzzle, is what those congregate meals are.
So do you have a number of home-delivered meals? That was that last number, that wasn't all home-delivered, was it?
Yes.
That was fourteen hundred something?
The units, the meals, sixteen thousand five hundred and forty.
And that's, that's the whole, the whole of Jackson County, or?
That's the whole of Jackson County. And with our new system, with being able to do drop-shift meals, we're no longer confined to just a route, where our hot meals had to be specifically on a route where you could maintain temperature. Now that we also offer drop-ship, we can serve any one. So that way, people in the most furthest reaches of the county can get meals as well. And then, yes, again, sixty-six percent of that total budget, again, that two hundred and fifty-nine thousand, is strictly going towards the cost of the home-delivered meal program. If you compare that to the congregate nutrition, only about eight percent of our total budget goes there. Not because we choose for that to go there, but that's where that demand. Home-delivered meals, we have to be a little more strict on as far as the requirements. They have to be homebound by definition of an illness, disability, condition, not being able to drive. There has to be pretty strict criteria. Anybody can walk into the congregate meal site. So that shows you that there's just not as large of a demand. The next page there gives a little breakdown between congregate meal participants at one hundred and fourteen in a year, and then our home-delivered meal participants, we have a hundred and two in the last fiscal year. Now, what I find the most interesting about this graph is that bar actually shows you then the number of meals those participants consumed. Our congregate meal participants are only averaging about fifteen meals per year. They make them once a month. Honestly, a lot of that's need-based. Over eighty-two percent of those individuals report that they are not in poverty. Eighty percent of them report to us that they are not in high-nutrition risk, meaning that they have access to fruits and vegetables, they have access to multiple meals per day, they can get groceries and things of that nature. Conversely, our home-delivered meal population, over forty percent of them report being below poverty level, and seventy percent of them are categorized as high-nutrition risk. Those folks are getting those five meals per day because they meet those qualities and are in desperate need of nutritious food. A lot of our nutrition, or excuse me, our home-delivered meal folks, report back to us stories of that that one meal per day that we serve them may be the only complete meal they get. It may be the only source of fresh fruits and vegetables. So that is why kind of more of our focus, you know, we try to really use what the Older Americans Act asks of us, of being sure that we, and I'm going to quote this from the Older Americans Act, "provide assurance that preferences given, providing services to older individuals with the greatest economic need, and older individuals with the greatest social need, particular attention to low-income individuals, low-income minorities, other individuals with limited English proficiency, and lower, excuse me, older individuals residing in rural areas, including proposed methods of carrying out these preferences in our state plan, which is a plan we have to submit every year, showing how we're going to meet these needs." So again, that is why one of our high-priority areas is in those home-delivered meals, because that is where those high needs are, is those folks that are homebound, that may only get that one meal. So the reason I kind of break those down and show those numbers to you is because I understand that there are some issues and concerns with the seniors that are. Do I know all the ins and outs of it? No, I honestly, I don't know all the nitty-gritty details, because that's honest, brutally honest, that's not exactly my job. My primary job is to look and scour all over for additional funding to help feed the older individuals of all the eighteen counties we serve, get them other services. Because as I talked about, the older populations are growing throughout Iowa. Federal funding is staying level, local funding is staying level, if not dropping. So my job is to come out, help explain to folks what we do in the community, why it's important to keep funding it, to make people see that the services we offer may be above and beyond what you're seeing on the surface level, but still very important. And I ask that you continue to help us support those folks in your counties and help them continue to stay healthy and living in their homes. So I hope you will reconsider in releasing the funding to support us for this year.
Well, it does help. It seems like, at least from my perspective, that mostly what we hear about is the meals that are, that take place down there and the activities and stuff. And I think part of the hesitation, at least on my part, it seemed like there's a desire to pull away. And it's hard to, we, we budget an annual contribution, and then it seems like halfway through the year, there's a desire to no longer be there. That's where, at least the perception seems to be, well, what do we, what do we get in for our money? You know, the biggest, the biggest job we have is paying for our buck to the, to the taxpayers of Jackson County, and understanding there's more than just the meals, but even, I've only been a supervisor for two years, but the primary conversation, even from the people that have been here asking for the money, and that is, we do meals. And if you're not going to do meals, you don't want to be in our center. Are we giving our money this year? I think we pledged five thousand dollars, or that's what we budgeted, what are we getting for it? And this can help us understand or at least justify, because again, it's very hard to justify when there isn't a, I don't even know if you'd call it a face-to-face presence, but a withdrawing presence, you know, are we still getting our same value? So that's, that's where this information is, is key.
Yeah. And primarily, I know a lot of times when I do presentations with it, so I talk about meals in, in the larger picture of home-delivered and the congregate as well, because that is the service most people recognize that we do. People aren't always this understanding of, you know, what case management services are, what return to community services are. You know, I'd love to go around and spend a good hour at every community that we have, in every public department, you know, and give them a really good breakdown of exactly what our case managers are doing on a day-to-day basis. My three minutes here won't probably fit that plan.
Sorry, Paula.
That's okay.
I know you mentioned a little bit, you know, like the in-home counseling type thing. Do you have any numbers on that? I mean, did, did we serve any, anyone in Jackson County, or how many were in-home counseling?
So if you-
So is there somebody on site for that, I guess, also? You know, where they come from, where, where do they come from?
So if you look at page, online, it's showing page five at Jackson County Consumers Per Program. This is kind of high-level. So the green, where it says, or excuse me, orange case management services, those would be in-home case management services. You've got another oranges, transportation.
It gives me a percentage added number.
So the first number is the number of individuals. And the comma, then there's a comma, and the second number is the percentage of those we've served.
And I apologize, I don't have that in front of me.
Okay. So let's see here, it looks like, and I'd have to pull up my computer to get even more accurate on here. But yes, we do offer those services here. So for example, caregiver services, we offer to thirty individuals. So that makes up about four percent of the folks that we served. Case management, looks like about a hundred and twenty-seven individuals, sixteen percent of services. HCVS services, what that stands for, home and community-based services. So those are going to be things like the homemaker, personal cares. So if someone needs help bathing, we can help to pay. Those are folks receiving funding to help with a bath they need, or someone to help them in the home. The case management part then comes where anyone who we provide a funded service for is, also has case management, where they have a dedicated staff member who's going to be coordinating those services, doing monthly check-in with those folks, home visits, and communicating back and forth to make sure those services are still appropriate, because they're covering everything that's needed. As far as do we have a person here? We've really gone to a model where everything is so much in the home that we don't have a lot of necessarily like a physical office here, but our staff travel everywhere.
And that's, that's, I guess that's something I would like more, I would like to speak to somebody that's getting them services personally, and say, you know, are you, I mean, I know there should be, could be some HIPAA stuff here, that I can't get names and stuff, of course, but I would like to, you know, to know that these services are really helping them, if that's the right word, or, you know, if they're getting what they need, or if it's periodic, or if it's, you know, on a timely manner, I guess. And, and another side of that, when we do budgeting and stuff, we had a conversation, and we talked about like the city of Macokata being involved with, because I feel like whoever's coming to that center was probably in, in such an area that could be isolated to around the city or close to the city. I know that Bellevue has their own senior center, and I know the city funds a lot of that. So I don't, I don't know about, you know, having a partnership or something, or maybe like that, I don't know. I don't know what that all entails, but I, I hear what you're saying. It'd be, it'd be interesting, and I've never had one of these home-delivered meals, so I don't know how good they are, but.
They're really good. The newer, the newer provider that we have gone with, with those drop-ship meals, I'm going to be perfectly honest, they're really good. A lot of people-
What kind of sample?
I, uh-
Oh, we can get you a sample.
I talked to a couple of the people down at the beauty center, and they said that the drop-ship meals are significantly better than the-
Yeah.
Yeah?
Microwaved, warmed, whatever meals.
So then you have volunteers that deliver these, I assume, is that correct?
The drop-ship meals? They actually come, yes, they're delivered. Yeah, depending on what region you're in, the delivery, the vendor actually has a delivery service in some places, or they come via UPS.
Again, I apologize, I didn't realize that.
With the drop-shipping program, is it true that if somebody doesn't have a way to warm them up, you can help accommodate with that, or is that?
Absolutely. Yep, we have, you know, it's one of those things where we, we are limited by funding limitations, but we will do what we need to do. If someone doesn't have a microwave to warm those up, that's part of my job, is I will get out there and hustle until I can find a way to get somebody a microwave. And we have some very forceful staff members who will also scour the communities that they're in to see if there's a local business or someone that would donate one as well. And on top of that, then, I know a lot of concern people had, were, well, what if somebody can't carry the box? And what if they can't this, what if they can't that? And we've also offered to all of the folks receiving those meals that we have a volunteer connect program, where they can call us with those needs. We can connect them with volunteers who can come and help them do those things if need be.
Is there other activities at the center that NEI three A provides for them? I mean, I know they used to have different activities down there.
So some of those-
I know some of them were outsourced, though, if I'm correct.
Yeah, so there's a mixture, and I think that's another kind of confusing point with the centers. And all of our centers look completely different, depending on the situation in the county that you're in and the city and the location. So a lot of different communities will have like a council on aging, which is a completely separate entity from us, run by its own volunteers, its own people, they may have their own funding source. What we are going to be offering in those places is typically going to be the congregate meal, possibly some evidence-based educational classes. So those are things that have been proven through testing to be, like I said, based in evidence to promote health. So the Tai Chi for arthritis was one that I saw on here that we offer, so I can make sure I quote the right ones here. These would be listed on page four, and healthy steps for older adult. Those are two activities that have been offered in that particular center. We would also then have classes or events that are considered, they're non-evidence-based. So they are just going to be like health promotion activities, but they don't have the evidence base in front of it. So those are going to be other educational things that don't fit that evidence-based criteria. Now, things that don't fall into there are going to be things like playing cards and bingo and things like that. Those are things that maybe the council on aging is kind of organizing, supporting, but they, they don't fall into the services that we can fund.
In conversing with some of the people about the meals and stuff, they did say that there was Tai Chi offered down at the senior center. And then they also expressed an opinion that it was, they had to stop because it wasn't offered at all the senior centers in the area. That's what they were told. So.
Um.
Well, that's what they told me.
Okay. I don't know the accuracy, I don't know the exact situation that would lead to that comment. However, typically, our evidence-based classes can be offered where there is a need and a want. It does not have to be offered at every location.
Okay.
It is wherever we have a group of folks who express an interest, and if we have a staff member who are available, or we are even willing to train volunteers who will come take the training.
When they had the class, I think the, at least the one class I was told, they had like sixteen people participate. They actually, it was going very well, but then there, that's just what I was told, that they weren't able to do it because it wasn't offered at the surrounding center, so.
Yeah, that's-
That's what I was told in the summit meeting also, was that-
Yeah, that is not-
It was going over well here locally, but then it had to be offered Preston, Bellevue, Dubuque, Cascade, you know, all these other areas, and they didn't have people to offer it, so they couldn't.
That, to my understanding, is not accurate of our policies and procedures, if that is truly our Tai Chi for arthritis and fall prevention class that they are speaking of. However, again, when you've got a separate council on aging, different volunteers, different people.
Yeah.
If it's, yeah.
Healthy steps, I assume, is exercise type thing, or?
Healthy steps for older adults is actually a really interesting one-day class, where you come in, they do an assessment on your fall risk, and so they have you do different testing kinds of exercises on how easily you get up, things like that. They talk to the individuals about nutrition, different health conditions, about what your fall risk is, then they talk to you ways to mitigate that, how to talk to your doctor. They give you kind of a plan, they send you home with a workbook that gives you steps that you can take to help reduce your fall risk moving forward, and then they follow up with you later to see how you're doing with that. And it's nice because it's a one-day class. A lot of our stuff, a lot of evidence-based stuff, well, I understand it's typically you have to come participate for like six weeks, which can be hard to get folks to want to come that long.
I see that as a real positive, but then I can see the other side of it, to say, I'm not going to participate in it, because if they find out I'm, I'm at fall risk, they're going to put me somewhere.
We do not put people places.
No, but I mean, they're-
Yeah. It's going to push my family to put me somewhere.
Yeah, we, we don't put people places, and we don't call families and tell them, your mom failed the fall risk class, that's not something we would do. It's about getting the education to those people, because if they aren't aware of some of those things that make a fall risk, then how are we going to help educate them on what they can do to reduce that fall risk?
I, I appreciate the update, and you know, it's some, it's one of them things you just kind of not forget about, but just sometimes it gets put on the back burner, because you don't hear about it as much, or, you know, it's county roads or something. But it's, it's, it's important to hear about it, and what services they are, and what's being utilized, is what I like to see, you know? I like to know that being utilized in our community, and who's using.
I found your talk a lot more informative than maybe past conversations we've had.
Yeah, it was, I, I've got a whole page of notes.
I have another question, too, going forward. So at the meeting I sat at, you know, we're like, for example, the Tai Chi or whatever, if it was going to be offered like in Preston, and then in Bellevue, and then in Macokata, and then in Baldwin, or wherever, how do you get that information out to these people?
So there's a couple of different methods that they do with that, it depends on the community. A lot of times, they'll put something in like a local paper, it's on their website, it's on our Facebook page, they'll make a flyer to give folks to hand out, they'll announce it at the different, like, meal sites and things.
So because, again, we were, we were sitting there, and there was probably, I'd say, twelve people, roughly twelve or fifteen, maybe, again? And we're like, no offense, Brittany, how many of you guys get the local paper? And I think three raised their hand.
Yeah.
Out of them, you know, and we struggle with that here at the county, even trying to get notifications out to people and stuff like that. You know, and then we're like, how many of you listen to the local radio station? And again, I think about three or four maybe raised their hand, and out of them, three or four, two of them said they only listened during the news.
Oh, okay.
So it's like-
Yeah, and that's why we have been transitioning more to the social media channels and websites, and trying to get folks to kind of open up to the idea of receiving emails from us that have that marketing information.
Again, you're talking about the age group for social media, and emails are probably not happening.
It's surprisingly, you'd be surprised. Yeah, my ninety- Yeah, my ninety-four-year-old grandma is a huge fan of Facebook. She got Snapchat about a year ago when my kids got it for, um.
We're, we're doing some marketing for her.
I think there's a bear mind of that demographic that's hooked on YouTube.
They, they, they are a lot more active on that than people, I think, give them credit for. Now, I will say her, she doesn't always realize what she's posting, and sometimes it's a terrible selfie from about here up. We have to tell her, Grandma, you need to go delete that. Um, but they are really using more of that than we're, you know, than I think the, the community should be giving credit for.
Yeah, I mean, as you said, the demographic, the age demographic is getting higher and higher.
Yeah.
We started that twenty years ago at some point.
Yeah.
And now we're getting used to it a little bit, but, you know, like I said, if my grandson comes in and repairs my computer and and they work good, you know?
Yeah, absolutely. It really does.
Cool.
Well, I sure appreciate the update and the information. Yeah, it was, it was, uh, informative. I, I will say that. I appreciate it. Any other questions for Lisa?
No, thank you very much.
And I would love an opportunity at some point to come and spend more time and sit down with you or whoever or whatever.
Maybe over one of those microwave meals.
Yeah, whatever venue it is, I could bring you a microwave meal and we can talk some more.
If I sign up for one, I probably have to lie or something to get one.
Well, I, we do have the ability to bring you a sample to try out, because I do think that's important, that people see. They're better than the old meals. They're really.
I, I heard the overwhelming positivity.
I, I, yes, I'm, I, I'd like, again, I'd like to see it, because is this something comes in a small factory and blows up when you put a heat on it? Or is it something that's actually food?
It is actually food. It is actually food, yeah.
There's another one.
Oh, my chi- chia pet, you know, I.
Yeah, I, it's not M R E, it's better. Um, and you know, what's nice too is that it comes, they have a menu and they get to choose.
Yeah.
Which folks like, and there's low sodium, there's low carb options, there's holiday specials on different months. And they can choose to eat it when they want. We aren't saying you're first on the route, you're getting your meal at ten, hope you want to eat early. You know, people are overwhelmingly liking it. But no, I would love to bring you a sample and sit down and dive into some deeper numbers. I can bring you testimonials. I don't know if I can drag somebody in to talk to you about those.
Or you can go to the senior center, like.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It might be more interesting though, and I mean, it's, you know, a possibility that we might find somebody who'd be willing to let you come into a home visit. I think it's important that folks do see and hear what we're doing for folks in the community above and beyond just the people in the senior center, because there's an entire different demographic that we're working with.
Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you guys for giving me this time today. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Lisa.
Thank you.
Drive safe.
I will, thank you. And if I get a big buck on, which I'll.
Or us. We're not law enforcement too, so be careful. All right, are there any visitors or citizens that would like to approach the board this morning? Um, would you like to approach the board or just here to?
Just here to watch.
Okay. Uh, Lisa? Boy, I can't wait.
We, yeah, I was gonna say, we had an eleven-twenty scheduled time for, uh, the canvas today, so we're running just a little bit late, but that's okay. Um, you know, I think it's always important to go back so we can go forward. You know, bringing our, all of our goodies with us. So let's just start and we'll talk about the election. That's, that's the fastest way to get to today. You know, we were very busy here at the auditor's office as far as absentee voting. Um, we had a thousand, uh, excuse me. Uh, we actually ended up with four thousand one hundred and forty-five potential absentee voters. Um, of that, we had forty-six, what we call Uakawa voters, and those are the uniformed overseas civilians. Those are people that are either serving in the service, or maybe they are um, going to school, maybe they're teaching in, you know, so these are people that are out of the area that we are allowed to, or I shouldn't say we, they are allowed to, uh, vote an absentee ballot. And so it was a good thing that we did delay our meeting yesterday, because at ten minutes to twelve yesterday, one of those Uakawa ballots was, um, delivered to us via the US post office. So we had, they had until noon yesterday to, to get that done. We did receive a ballot. The absentee team was here and that ballot did count. We had forty-six of those eight. I mean, these numbers are just unbelievable. There were eight Uakawa ballots that were not returned. That's, that's just, it's wonderful. And of the other ballots that we mailed out, only fourteen were not returned. That's incredible.
Four thousand one hundred and fifty-five in the hell.
Be, um, that is between the, yes, that's between the Uakawa voters and the voters that voted here in the courthouse. And of that, eight were not returned to Uakawa, which is amazing, and fourteen were also not returned. So that, that return rate is very good. I mean, that's, that's really good. I anticipated that for this election, we should have anywhere between a seventy and seventy-five percent, um, participation. We actually ended up at seventy-three point six percent for participation, which is about where we thought we would be. Um, of that, ten thousand eight hundred and forty-nine people actually participated in this twenty twenty-four general election. So we had a good turnout. We also registered a lot of people on election day. Um, so, yeah, I mean, in our absentee team, they came in, they started Monday morning. Um, they were dealing with, um, all of the absentee ballots. We chose to have every one of our absentee ballots opened by hand instead of running it through our, um, electronic letter opener, because we didn't want to have any ballots, you have to open it up in a certain way. And in visiting with the team, they felt it was better that they just opened them up by hand. So everything, we had all of these openers, they did it all by hand, they did a wonderful job. They worked, uh, Monday night till, excuse me, I think seven, I think, because we were here and we were getting ready to be done for the day two. So they put in thirty-one hours a peak. That's pretty good. Again, they were here yesterday, they started on last Monday, they were here Tuesday, and then they came back and helped us again yesterday. When it comes to the, the actual day of voting, um, you know, I'm always give ourselves a grade. I really believe, to be fair, I believe that we had a B-plus election. There's always issues that we have when it comes to, yeah, we always have issues when it comes to voters, and you know, they're confused of where they're supposed to go and what they're supposed to do. And so, you know, you work through that, but we had no major issues. Everybody, um, in essence, was allowed to vote. We did have seven provisional ballots. And seven provisional ballots is actually, that's pretty good for this kind of an election. The reason why we have provisional ballots is we tell the election officials that is the way of saying to that voter, we're going to allow you to cast a ballot, it is not going to be counted today. So they are given a ballot, it is put in an envelope. Because on election day, if you are a new, newly registered voter, you're coming to the precinct on election day, you have to prove who you are and where you live. And there were five of those, seven, that could not prove where they lived. So they, they were given a ballot, it is not put in the scanner, and that's what the, the ladies took care of yesterday. The other two, when they registered them and put them into the system, um, we download, I shouldn't say way Bjorn, uh, downloads that on Monday night before the election, we download the felon file from the entire state of Iowa. And two of those seven then came back as potential defendants. So, again, we didn't deny anybody because we didn't know. Uh, then what happens come last Wednesday, all that information needs to be sent to the state. They do their analysis and then they come back to say either they are felons or they are not felons. So those two ballots, uh, for felons were, came back that they were still had a felony conviction and those ballots did not count. So, seven provisional ballots, none of those provisional ballots, excuse me, counted. But we did receive two Uakawa ballots back. So they were opened up yesterday, because they met the criteria, they met the timeline. So there were two ballots that were opened up and counted yesterday. And so if you see in our returns in our numbers, there were two additional, uh, votes for Christina Bohannon that were cast yesterday. So those numbers decreased by two. Um, other than that, we really didn't have any issues with any of our voting equipment, which is good. Um, I am glad that we did not purchase new voting equipment for this election, but I will be asking you to, um, we're going to budget and we're going to purchase new election equipment for the next year's election. Um, it's time. We're concerned about the motherboard that is in it. And I know the last count, there were eight counties, and I know several of them did purchase new voting equipment, so we're probably down to just the last few. Do you know the number? Yeah, see, I don't, yeah, it was eight. I know that some had purchased. So anyway, we're going to take care of that. We're also going to have to buy new laptop computers. And so that'll be a significant increase. We're kind of hoping that the state will do a, a bulk uh, order, and hopefully we can get a good price for all new computers. We're probably going to look anywhere between thirty-five and forty laptop computers that we're going to have to do with this. So it's going to be an expensive budget next year when it comes to elections, but, um, just like your home computer, unfortunately, they're only good for so, for so long, and we'll be looking at new equipment. Um, and I think the other thing is it takes a very concentrated effort throughout the state of Iowa and every precinct and every county to put on this election. And so people that say that, that our elections are corrupt, I guess they should get a hold of me because I don't know how it's done. I mean, everything that we do, we have, we had a public test that was done two, three weeks ago, probably now. We invite both of the political parties to come in to take a look. Uh, we have, we fill out, it took a a thousand and eleven hundred and forty. I think it took eleven hundred and forty. Yeah, it took eleven hundred and forty ballots, I believe, to do a public test. And every machine is tested, so we know what the expected return is. Um, we actually had someone in the office that had to sit down and darken in all the ovals that we had for the expected return. So our public test was, was done, there were no issues, and so we start election day. Machines are set, election day, first thing in the morning, then the election officials, they do have what we call a zeros report that comes out first thing in the morning, and then at seven o'clock, obviously, voting starts. Voting goes until eight o'clock at night. I don't believe we had anybody in line or any of those issues that everybody's concerned about. At the end of the night, then, the return comes out of the machine, and we have changed our position over the last several years. We actually have people that go out to every precinct and they pick up the jump drive along with a secured envelope that is sealed and everyone signs on it, so we know the chain of command. Um, everybody's getting its timestamped, and we know as this equipment comes back, we ask those election officials to send us a tape and a write-in report, the jump drive and the machine. We do not let the machine stay at the precinct. So that's one set of people that work for Jackson County to go out and pick up that equipment and help us out. Therefore, there's no calling in to the auditor's office and did we transpose a number? We know that when we upload our results to the Secretary of State's office, that our numbers are good. We don't have to doubt anymore. When we put our numbers in, uh, on election night, they are good numbers. And that's what we start this whole process now, getting towards the canvas. And then we have another set of people that go out and they pick up all of the equipment that they delivered. You know, so all of that, and then Bjorn goes out and picks up the remainder of the equipment that is, I, we call them the garbage cans and, and some signs and things like that. So Bjorn goes out the next day and picks all of that up. So again, it takes a village, it takes people, Bjorn and Bob, um, delivered equipment. You know, we've got everybody in the auditor's office that worked through the whole, uh, absentee process, the whole election process, and then we have, you know, obviously those precinct election officials that work on election day. And then, you know, we have the end of the night people that help us out. So it really does take a village. And then what happens is election officials are told at the end of the night, we have paperwork that they fill out, it has all of these returns in it, with all of these tapes of how we come out um, with, you know, who wins, who loses, who ties, whatever. As just a point, um, there were one thousand and eighty-four write-in votes. It took me three and a half days, because we break down the write-in votes by precinct, and you're going to have to add them all together as a cumulative one total. So, um, I could not get things to come out when I left on Friday night, so I sat at my kitchen table and I had to find two votes for the sheriff's race. And I did it, because it's just, you know, it's important, every vote, when people pass the ballot, every vote counts. So a thousand and eighty-four ballots for everyone, and people are elected by write-in votes. Um, we had a soil and water conservation that was done by write-in, so we do have a winner when it comes to that. Um, we do have, I have worked with John Keyes, our county attorney, on several issues that we've had in Jackson County this time. Um, we all have heard about what happened through the Secretary of State's office with, um, people that were, um, not US citizens trying to vote. We did have that in Jackson County. We had one person. I knew this person personally, um, and so we resolved that issue. Um, this person, um, did, uh, go through citizenship, and this person also received a passport. You cannot receive a passport unless you're a US citizen. The documentation was provided to me, and I did not feel that it was necessary to challenge that person. That person did vote, was one of the forty-six that voted by Uakawa. Um, and that vote did count, and it did count with the absentee board on Tuesday. So that's a, we get a lot of phone calls about that. I've answered, um, I've had CNN call me about this. I mean, it's just, yeah, we've had a lot of phone calls from various people, but I did not feel that that was appropriate to challenge that, that ballot, because that person met all of the criteria um, and proved that this person was a US citizen. So. Um, we take, we take this, you know, on Wednesday, we have, you know, a heck of a mess in our office. But the main thing is we go back to our tally book that the election officials filled out. We take a look as the TMs that, uh, Bjorn gets uploaded, and that's how we get to today, where I have an abstract of vote, an election canvas summary, and in the end, we have certificates of elections that, um, I'll be asking for a signature. Um, so we do have, because of the write-in, the way the write-ins go, we do have, where we need to draw some names out of the hat, one and two. This would be for Jackson Township trustee, and so we're going to, we're going to draw a name, because this was a tie. So this would be Tom Hire. So that'll be for, and so Bjorn's going to have to go do some magic with our, with our reports here. So that is.
That's township what?
Jackson Township trustee. Jackson Township trustee. Then we have Richland Township trustee, where we have two people, one and two, that also is a tie for, um, the write-in position. And Erin Burisma. And so that is for Richmond Township trustee. And the third one that we need to draw for is the Union Township trustee, looks like two. One and two, and we're going to draw for those names. And this would be Si Sandhold. So Bjorn's gonna go, um, and we're gonna end up creating certificates and part of the abstract and the canvas summary. Um, I think other than that, I think everybody's probably glad to have the election over.
Yeah.
So when we change, uh, precincts here, when was that, two years? Was it two years ago?
Coming years, yeah.
So I mean, I heard, I did hear one report that there was a tremendous line in Lamont. So is that Perry Springs, Tatum Moore, and?
So there's three townships. Let me, uh.
Richland too?
Yeah, yes, it's a, it's a very big township, and I can tell you there's one thousand six hundred and ten potential voters in that precinct. Um, between absentee voting and going to the precincts on election day, one thousand one hundred and seventy-eight actually voted for a seventy-three point one seven percent turnout in that precinct. So the High Precinct, um, was actually in what we call the Otter Creek precinct. Um, that's where you've got Otter Creek and Butler Brandon. And then, um, you know, a little bit of Zouango, but there were, overall, we had thirty different ballot styles. Um, so because of all the township officials and such, and that's why we went through so many ballots to do our public test is because of all of the thirty different ballot, ballot styles. But the High Precinct, in that precinct, they had a seventy-nine point one nine percent turnout.
How many voters?
Uh.
How many potential voters?
Nine hundred and eighty-five potential voters, seven hundred and eighty voted. Uh, the thing is, it, the Macokata precincts were actually the lowest precincts in the sixties. Yeah, Macokata overall had a sixty. Yeah, McCoqueta overall had a sixty-five, almost a sixty-six percent turnout. So, McCoqueta City, McCoqueta was significantly less.
Interesting.
They did a lot of registering of voters on Election Day, um you know, um which is good, that's what we want, everybody has to meet that criteria.
So, another question, and I can't remember how exactly that, so if you moved since the last election, but you still live in Jackson County, of course, you've moved. You gotta come back in and re-register your new address?
If you're registered, you do not, because all you're doing is you're moving around. So you just register in the precinct in which you reside.
So if he wasn't registered, he'd have to show proof of his address somehow?
If he, if you have someone that is not registered to vote on Election Day, it's called Election Day registration, and you have to prove who you are and where you live. As an example, if you have your driver's license and it's your, that which proves who you are, then you have to take a look at the address, is the address the address of where you reside right now, or is the address on your driver's license where you used to live? Then, if it is not, if it is not your current address, that's where you have to prove bank statement, some form of, you know, to say that you live there. Maybe the deed to your new house, you brought that in, or something, but you have to prove, you have to prove where you live, and if you don't prove that, then you voted provisional, and that's what those five were.
That's interesting, because he, I mean, he didn't, I mean, this person didn't realize that, and um of course gets all his mail through P O box, so he didn't have anything at home, he went back home, and he didn't have anything with an address on it, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you could do a bank statement, you could, and you know, they just wanna see the address, they don't wanna see the bank statement, they're not interested in that, they just wanna see the address, and, and several people did. Absolutely.
Yeah, but it all goes through the P O box.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, so I mean, things do happen, and we try and, we work really hard to try and find something. You know, maybe a hun- I, I don't know, you know, boat registration, but you're right, some of the stuff that goes to a P O box, I
And of course, it makes a difference how long you live there, you know, you wouldn't have a lot of that changed over yet, but yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Well, good, I, I, I didn't hear any complaints, other than the line was long, and I said, well, that's a good thing.
Right, well, and that's the problem up in Lamont, you don't know why, I mean, they had three computers, then they said one didn't work, and I went up there, and I, so you know, things happen, we can't be everywhere, we try, you know, but I know that in the morning, Kalen left Bellevue and went to Lamont to deal with some issues, so. I mean, and yeah, there was, I went up there, oh, it must've been after the board meeting. I think I went up there, and yeah, there was just a trickle the whole time that I was there, and I didn't wanna sit there, I thought that was inappropriate, so I kinda said, you have any questions, and I moved on, but the whole time that I was there, um they were busy.
I didn't, I didn't hear any issues, and I talked to some of the gals there in Bellevue, and they decided
We ended up setting up another computer in Bellevue.
Well, then they have one that didn't work initially right off the bat.
So that's why, I mean, this is a relatively, um it's called IPAC, I, Iowa, it's Iowa Precinct Atlas Consortium is what it's called, and you know, there were some changes to the program, we had some really weird stuff happen that we can't really
Well, I actually commend Bjorn for getting there on, giddy up and, and got it rolling, so.
Yeah, no, I usually do start my day someplace else, I did start uh election morning at, at Pearson until um there was an issue in a precinct and I ended up driving there, so um it wasn't a major issue, it was very a minor issue, but we wanted to take care of it right away, so um you know, there's just a lot of signing and such, and I know you're kinda on a timeframe today, so. Okay, yeah, so um Bjorn's gonna bring down those three things that we need to do here, but if any other questions?
Nope, good job. Yeah, well done, and your staff and your helpers, and commend them all.
I mean, if you really think about how many people, I mean, it really
Well, you gotta think how busy it would have been if you didn't have forty-some percent of the voters come in early. Cause you have four thousand some out of the ten thousand.
About, it comes, my, my one report shows thirty-seven point seven six percent. So, yeah, you know, it was kinda, let's just say that it was a sixty-forty split. Which is, you know, pretty good, yeah, and yeah, we worked very hard, and there was a lot of people in the hallway here. Um and so, that first day, when we started on the sixteenth of October, my morning, most of my morning was spent moving furniture. Um when I set up Monday night, I had only set up four tables for voting and one for to process people, and by the end of, by noon, I had set up seven tables and then two more to keep processing, so that's all that I got done for you know, and then we did use, um you know, we had some people that maybe needed some assistance, so we did bring people in here to vote, we took some people down to the magistrate courtroom to vote that had, you know, if you're gonna have someone read the ballot to you, I prefer that you're not reading it out in the hallway, that they're given that, that private area. So, um we did
Yeah, I did have, have a, hear a comment that it was rather congested sometimes in the hallway, I don't know if we had their space. If our entryway up above works a little bit or something, if we have to watch, have a patrol, or I, I don't know, I guess I, I heard it. With both tables on both sides is all I heard, yeah.
Yeah, no, and that's, I mean, we may have to address that, look at it, the problem is, is with our computer systems, you know. Um what was nice is if the counter was busy, and we had that happen a lot, the counter was full, then they were going back to their desk and processing people to keep, to keep moving and such, so, yeah. So if you have no other questions, Brittany, do you?
Uh not at the moment.
Okay, all right, so, if, if we're done to say that this is now complete, um I need a motion to authorize the board to certify the thorough and correct abstract of votes cast in Jackson County at the November fifth, twenty twenty-four general election, as shown by the thirteen regular precincts and absentee precincts, and authorize the board to sign the official state abstracts, county abstracts, and further authorize the chair signing the certificates of election, and authorize Auditor Smith to forward the abstracts to the Iowa Secretary of State.
We're moved.
Second, have a motion and a second to approve the canvas of the twenty twenty-four general election results and proceed as presented. All those in favor say aye. I've opposed.
Would you like me to continue with just a few, I, other items I have?
Sure.
Okay, so I need a motion to approve the minutes of the November fifth, twenty twenty-four board proceeding as written by Auditor Smith, and authorize publication the official newspapers.
Motion second, approve the minutes of November fifth, twenty twenty-four board proceedings, and publish as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, same side? Motion carried.
Motion needed to approve invoices for two hundred and twenty-six dollars and fifty-two cents to Midwest Construction Consultants and two thousand seven hundred and fifty to Stickley Electric for a total of two thousand nine hundred and seventy-six dollars and fifty-two cents, and authorize the chair signature and the project cost recap for the Jackson County Fair and ISU Extension slash the Forreach Outreach Center for the month ending October twenty twenty-four.
Is this complete now?
I think this is it. I saw everything uh switch on the, that was on the right hand of the page, it switched to the left, and everything said a hundred percent. So I think this is our final, ta-da.
Other than if we have more to work or something. Motion a second to approve the invoices as presented, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, motion carried.
Motion needed to approve resolution number ten seventy-nine dash eleven dash thirteen dash twenty twenty-four for the annual inter-fund operating transfer for fiscal year twenty-four twenty-five, in the sum of twenty thousand dollars from the general fund, the O one thousand fund, to the local public health nurses fund, twenty-four thousand, effective November thirteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Normal transfer?
Yes.
Second.
Motion second to approve resolution ten seventy-nine dash eleven dash thirteen dash twenty twenty-four as presented, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, same side? Motion carried.
Motion needed to approve resolution number ten eighty dash eleven dash thirteen dash twenty twenty-four for the annual inter-fund operating transfer for fiscal year twenty-four twenty-five, in the sum of seventy-four thousand two hundred and sixty-nine dollars from the general basic fund, O one thousand to the local health sanitation fund, the twenty-four thousand fund, effective November thirteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Motion a second to approve resolution ten eighty dash eleven dash thirteen dash twenty twenty-four for the annual inter-fund operating transfer as presented, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, motion carried.
That's all that I have for the board today.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, if you have any questions.
Uh no, I was just, um if I could give a print version of the election canvas summary for uh the congressional race after this.
Why don't you leave your email address, I'll do mail it to you, also, because we have changed right now.
These are not the originals, correct?
No, those are your copies, and I can have the originals here for signature.
Alright, thank you, and Luanne?
Hello?
Good morning.
Oh, we just barely passed that. That's what I was checking, sorry. Um calendar for this week, a little on the crazy side, um one o'clock this afternoon is a zero to five in sixty minutes meeting by Zoom for NIN. At four o'clock is the Courts of Eastern Iowa Authority Meeting by Zoom for whichever of you has decided is gonna go to that. NIN, okay. And also at four o'clock is Veterans Affairs Commission Meeting for any of you that want to attend that. Six thirty tonight is the Municipal League Meeting, um that's Andrew Fire Department, believe that that's for Mike. Thursday, November fourteenth, at eleven AM, is the Mississippi Valley Business Committee Meeting by Zoom for Don. At noon on Thursday is the Jackson County Area Tourism Association Meeting by Zoom for any of you that wanna go to that. And at two o'clock that afternoon is the Destination Iowa Bid Opening um at McCoqueta City Hall for any of you that wanna go to that.
I inquired um Josh, and he said there's really no reason for us to be there for the opening, it's just the opening and I mean, unless you wanna go, I, I probably will not attend.
I tend to just, he did it, that depending on how it comes in, there could be a a dire need be addressed.
Well, I mean, we'll have to address that when we have our
Friday.
Correct.
Right, so yes, so then on Friday at nine AM, um is a meeting downstairs in the community room um discussing those bids that are opened on Thursday, the Destination Iowa Project. Um also on Friday at eleven AM, which is an early start time for them, is a DCAT meeting either in the WIT or by Zoom for Mike. And eleven fifteen is the Coqueta Community Cupids Open House, for any of you that wish to attend that. Monday, November eighteenth, at ten thirty AM is an ISAC's special meeting by Zoom for Mike. At one thirty is a Waste Authority of Jackson County Meeting at the Transfer Station for Mike. And then at five thirty that night is the Together We Build Inc. Board for Don. Um at six o'clock is a zoning commission meeting um in the community room or by Zoom for any of you, and then at seven o'clock is the Together We Build Steering Committee Meeting for NIN. Our next regular meeting will be on Tuesday, November nineteenth, at nine AM. And that afternoon at five o'clock is a Conservation Board Meeting in Hurstville for any of you. At six o'clock that night is a Jackson County Economic Alliance Meeting by Zoom for Don. And at seven o'clock is a Board of Health Meeting um for NINs.
And with Together We Build, there was that question about, um I did talk to Rick, and he said that hundred and fifty-eight thousand or whatever it's subtracted from, it's what's left over with the pledges like our hundred thousand and a few other things that they need to raise before the end of twenty-seven. So it's kind of
It just looks funny, okay, but that's good.
Yeah, he actually sent me a spreadsheet explaining it, there's a bunch of different donations, and it includes our twenty-five for four years. And that's all subtracted from the three hundred thousand, and that's the remaining that they need to fundraise.
Questions for Luanne?
Asked and answered, thank you. I have, I have one more thing, um I did receive a request yesterday from the Jackson County Fair Board or Fair Association, um they are applying for a grant, and they wanted from us a letter of support. So I put it together, and I gave it to Mike, and I gave all of you a copy of it, if you're okay.
Yeah, I don't see anything out of line that, we certainly wanna um show our support if they gonna be able to get a grant and a new roof for the building. So, so, I think we should be supporting our facility. We will move forward.
We need to maybe have a work discussion with the whole insurance issue, that all of a sudden, there's a whole lot of things need to be put in place before we can assume responsibility.
It's my understanding that ICAP, so they have ICAP insurance.
Yeah.
And we have ICAP insurance, and then ICAP is requesting, before they'll bridge it, that we have a lease with the Fair Board, they wanna see a lease in, you know, and whose responsibility it is for what.
And I appreciate that, and that is awesome, except for the fact, we've been working on this for about a year. Why does it come till a month and a half prior to us needing to transfer this? Cause one ends it, or one's ends it or renews in January, one renews in April, why is it in crunch time, end of the year, that we have to now jump through these hoops? That is my question to ICAP.
So, I believe that the lease may have been worked on already, and it stalled.
So, does ICAP have a standard policy or some types of lease that you, I mean, we have leases all over the place right now. We went through this last year.
Yeah, he's trying to standardize it, but it took uh how many months to get the Together We Build one done? And, and now it's, it's relatively the same thing.
Well, I mean, we still have a couple of months, I mean, we can get this done, there's, we still have a couple of months. Um ICAP is very well aware, but I know that that was the hiccup in last year's. That's why we had the whole issue, they paid the premium, and then ICAP wouldn't refund it back, and you know, we had, so that's why we just kinda said, we're gonna leave it.
I just saw that email, and I'm like, seriously, what, what, what's this, this, the stuff that we couldn't have, couldn't we have been talking about it earlier?
Yeah, I mean, the point of the whole thing is, it's not like we're changing companies, ISAC has it for them, and they're gonna have it for us, and you know, if it's a simple lease agreement, it, it should be simple. I mean, I, I know it's gotta be settled out, just like we did with Andrew Jackson, and we did with Together We Build, yeah, so, yeah.
Everybody kinda needs to come to the table so we can discuss it, and, and we can get it finalized. Which may put, I guess then, you know, we do have a lease with the Historical Society. Uh we might have to take a second look at that.
So like Don said, if you think there's a need for us to meet uh separately for a work session, or have a meeting of whatever it might be, um
I think now that we can kinda hopefully put, you know, the election stuff done now, um we have to get everything into the Secretary of State's office, we have quite a bit of work yet to get done, to get to the Secretary of State's office, but um my goal now is to transition into certain things that need some attention, and this lease is one of them, so.
So again, I'm, we're gonna under, make people understand that these work sessions that we have, they're, they're all open to the public, so there always are. And, and there, there's decisions that are discussed, there's decisions that are not made, or voted on. So it's just discussion, and you're more than welcome to come, and we do take minutes, I mean, they're not detailed to everything that was said, but it's, it's just like any other meeting, but it's more of an informal
I think you and the board need to make some decisions as far as what you want in the lease. As an example, let's take the, the show barn as an example, and we're paying the insurance, and all of a sudden, the storm comes in and the show barn goes down. And it's gonna cost um five hundred thousand to replace the show barn. And we only have a hundred thousand dollars worth of insurance. Now what? So that's the kinda things that we need to discuss.
And we've gone through this before too, at some point, we gotta come be insurance, fund their, fund ourself, I think. We have to be self-insured, I wanna say, at some point, I can't, I can't put five hundred thousand dollars on that building, when I know I have a hundred volunteers that'll come in in two weeks and, and restore it maybe, I don't know, but the point is, you we get to the point where we're, how much insurance can we have?
Well, and I know I've had the conversation with Jennifer about not insuring under a certain dollar amount.
You know, uh yeah, I, I would agree, there's gotta be a parameter that we follow. I'm, I'm more concerned about some of this cyber stuff than I am physical damage anymore, you know, stuff I can't see coming, you know, I can duck or go in the basement, but I you know, I can't see this other stuff coming, but.
Anyway.
So yes, we're gonna Yeah, we're gonna get on it, we're gonna figure it out, and yes, we need to talk about it.
Appreciate it.
Yep.
Okay, any other items before the board, I got commission reports, uh just a couple quick, uh we had a nine-one-one meeting, everything went well, going well. Radios um are in, for fire and EMS in Bellevue and McCoqueta. So again, there's training that's coming, of course, with So again, there's training that's coming, of course, with that. Uh, Jaden, our, our engineer was voted to my, be my alternate, as Todd was the alternate before. So that got done, uh, pretty simple stuff, but uh, the good thing is to hear that the radios are in. Um, and they're working. So they, they're moving forward with that. Uh, you guys might have a better report for the RT. I know there was um extensive discussion on the enterprise program and we need to review that.
Right. RTA basically had their budget analysis done and that all was good, but yes. This uh enterprise band pool system, a lot of discussion on that. They finally got possibly one. One entity, one company that's wanting to use it, but not for sure if it's a good fit to use it, so. More information coming hopefully in the next month.
There's a lot of discussion. I think there'll be more discussion. Not the way it sounded to me. Any other business?
I only got one thing and I, I didn't know if the sheriff was gonna be here or whatever today. But Monday night I got a, there was an email sent to me and. Brett and Andrew and John stating from Delbert Longley that he had just spoke with Andrew. Was advised that the issues concerning me with the jail have been resolved. And since they've been resolved, he was not gonna visit on Tuesday. And he wanted to advise us that we were authorized to start utilizing the facility immediately. Official certification to follow. This week, so our jail should, is good to go. So that's exciting, so.
Well, it's been a wait and hope and hopefully everything works out and we'll, of course, they're gonna have extensive training there too, I would suspect. Uh, a couple runs or dry runs, if you will. If anybody wants to volunteer, we give you a chance. Well, it might change your mind when you hear that click behind you. Alright, any other business before the board?
Motion adjourned.
A little motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried, meeting adjourned. Have a great day.